Of SMART, we not only have hotel workers that don't get here and new foreign citizens that can't get to work, but we have seniors that can't get to the doctor, is that right?
I believe that's correct. Mr. Lamorato can verify that.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor and City Council, we do use, we receive about $180,000 a year in SMART credits that do go for the Medigo transportation. There are additional funds over and above that, but we do, $180,000 that gets passed along for that purpose.
So if we wanted to continue that service the way it is now, we'd have to find another $180,000 to $200,000 in a budget that's already running, quite honestly, at a deficit.
That's correct.
Not going to happen.
And they use the smaller bus for the-
Absolutely.
-Medigo transport. Okay, are there other council comments or questions?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman McGinnis?
And of course, this comes just a few weeks after we reviewed the rules of procedure, and may have been better suited to that discussion, but I at least wanted to bring it up in terms of the discussion that we had regarding distracted driving ordinance. And I understand we're not required by Charter for first and second reading, but that past practice has been that that type of ordinance, or any other ordinance that we're reviewing, comes to us first as a green item or something that we'll be seeing on a future agenda. And I don't know if it's a discussion that we need to have to add that potentially to the rules of procedure, to make sure that that's something that we try to do when we're looking at ordinances, or if it's just really opening it up for discussion here. But it's my understanding that that's what we've been trying to do in past practice, and I think it would be something that we may want to consider putting into our rules of procedure, so that we're addressing each instance in the same way.
Okay, council, any comments with regard to that? I, we could put it in rules of procedure, or we could just indicate to staff that we'd like to see ahead when there's a new ordinance coming forward, much as, you know, we have upcoming kinds of things, just so that we could have more, a little bit more lead time on it, that people would be aware. Mr. Zerlik, would that be a problem?
We'll be happy to do that. We initiated what was called a low-tech green item years ago, not just for ordinances, but for any policy issue, and we'll be happy to do that for all ordinances, if you like.
Is there any objection to doing that? Okay. And that way, we wouldn't have to have it in rules of procedure, we're just doing it administratively. Okay? Is that fine with you, Councilwoman McGinnis?
Oh, yes, that would be fine. I agree that that would be our course of action.
Okay. Any other council comments?
Mayor?
Councilman Howardlack?
Well, I just wanted to add, I think that's a good idea to place some more emphasis on that section of the agenda than we have, because I think that's a good opportunity to at least open up that discussion, to kind of hash it out before, you know, decision day, as opposed to having to postpone it. Yeah, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman Kirwin?
And just one more thing, the opportunity to look at SMART and many other renewals will be on the August 3rd primary, so even if people aren't interested in partisan voting, there are important millages and nonpartisan voting on the primary ballot. And one can come to our own clerk's office to have access to what would be on that, so you have an idea, and then we encourage everyone to do vote on August 3rd, or vote by absentee.
Okay, further council comments? Okay, we have court that we're not having a closed session, but we are having a study item. Yes, Mrs. Zerlik?
Thank you, Your Honor, members of council. If I may, just wanted to draw your attention to an item that was laid on the table relative to an acceleration proposal from Dan's Escavating Company. It was fairly lengthy.
Yes.
It's within management's purview of authority to approve this change order, because it falls still within the first 5 percent of our estate costs, but it's a large amount of money, about a half a million dollars, and it relates to a plume of contamination that was discovered at a Shell gas station at the corner of Waddles and Rochester Road. It caused Dan's Escavating to essentially stop work on large components of the project. If we were not to grant an accelerated payment to Dan's Escavating, we'd then have winterization costs, which we think would exceed the half a million dollars that's being proposed. We're negotiating with Dan's, essentially as we speak, we're also going to try to include as part of the proposal a liquidated damage as well after November 30th, and just wanted to advise you of that.
Would you prefer a resolution from council, or do you find it necessary?
Don't need one.
If there's no objection from council, I think it's a wise decision. It's unfortunate that contamination occurred, but of course, those are things we must deal with, and it would be less costly to deal with it this way-
Right.
...than to deal with it the other way, so.
This will also be a great benefit to the businesses contiguous to Rochester Road.
Less costly for everyone concerned. Okay.
Thank you.
No objection?
Mayor?
Councilman Howardlack?
Well, how long is, I should say, how long was the Shell gas station again? How long have we had a gas station at Waddles and Rochester in the northeast corner?
You know, I don't know, perhaps the attorney or one of the staff members do.
I don't know exactly how long, it's been quite a while.
I'm afraid I don't either, Mayor.
Well, I think, anecdotally, we know that it predated the more, the two series of modern regulations for reinforced containment on site, and I guess my issue with this is that it's a situation where we're at the 11th hour, and things that should have been foreseen, or at least thought of, you know, you can't, you can't prevent everything, so, but that had a big red flag on it, and it was probably the biggest red flag along the entire corridor, other than the previous site, which was the mobile on Phase 1 of the expansion project. So my concern is what, and please correct me if I'm wrong, I guess what I would like to know is what considerations were given to that site, and why is it that we have a memo about something that needs to be decided on Wednesday that's been developing all, really, all year? And actually, as a matter of fact, with just some basic knowledge, one would presume that most educated individuals would know that the Shell gas station could be a big environmental problem because of its age, and the fact that it wasn't built three years ago.
Wasn't it that the contamination went out further than was thought?
That's my understanding.
Yes, that's what I got from the memo, where they thought it was more contained back away from the roadway. Am I correct on that? Should I be asking, Mr. Hunter? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Hunter? You want to use this, I think this mic works a lot better, that one.
I can, while Mr. Hunter is collecting his thoughts at the microphone, I can respond to the second part of Mr. Howardlack's question, and that is that we became cognizant of this issue Friday afternoon. I met with staff in the attorney's office today, and the reason that Wednesday was given to make a decision is that they need to, they being Dan's Escavating, needs to mobilize their forces immediately in order to meet a November 30th deadline.
Right.
Mayor and council, we did include items in the contract for non-hazardous material. It's about 10,500 cubic yards. We did identify, or called lust sites, leaking underground storage tanks. Shell gas station was one of them. So for that reason, we did include that non-hazardous contaminated material handling and disposal as a contract item. What was discovered out there was essentially leaded gas, which is considered hazardous, because of the benzene and some of the other contents in there. Gasoline, unleaded gasoline is not considered a hazardous material, and it's something that can be worked through. Shell was responsible, being the owner of the site, when they sold leaded gas, they were responsible, the responsible party, to clean up and remediate the site, which they did. And there were some initial delays associated with that, removal of the canopy by the current owners, so Shell could get in there and clean up the site. Then they cleaned, they cleaned up the areas that they thought they had identified. When Dan started working on Water Main, that's when they encountered the additional contaminated materials, and would have to shut down, pull back, while the environmental firm would come back in, or Shell, and clean up those areas again. And that happened a couple times.
So what you're telling me is we, nobody had actually sampled off-site until we actually did the excavating?
We did not. As a practice, Shell, well, as a practice on the road projects, we don't go in and do wholesale sampling of the sites. There's discovery done as far as leaking under the lust sites in that respect, and if there's some idea that we're going to run into something outside of what would be private property out in the right-of-way or easement area, then we would include those items, quantities, with special provisions in the contract, so that we can deal with them. And that's typically how it's handled. In this case, there was leaded gas in soils outside of the site within what is now right-of-way easement areas. That Shell took responsibility and did clean up.
And what about the, I guess the other issue too, is if Dan's, it says here in the memo that Dan's had essentially moved some crews around even to other projects. Did, at what point did the city become aware that they wouldn't be able to meet the deadline?
Within the last week is when we were essentially given notice, because Dan, what Dan's was trying to do was move crews to do work. They had work available to try and reallocate their forces away from that area to try and essentially stay busy on the project. So they were doing that to the, they're to the point now, if you've been out there, Rochester northbound is essentially paved, most all of the driveways are done, side street approaches are done, sidewalks done, so they're to the point where they're like, we're run out of work.
And were some of the, so some of their crews have actually been moved to other projects out off-site to keep them busy, is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
And it didn't, when did it, I mean, I guess what I, it seems to me that if they're not working on our site, it's going to take longer to finish. At what point did we become aware of that? Because it sounds like they've been moving people around for a week.
Yeah, they have. They've been trying, I mean, Dan's has got a significant portion of work in this state. They're one of the largest contractors right now, and they're up on 59 is one of their areas, as is Ajax and all their subs. So the subcontractors doing curb work, or flat work, like the sidewalks, or drive approaches are moving in and out as work becomes available, but you can't have every sub in there and the prime contractor working in the same area, because they essentially are tripping over each other. So in order to do a driveway, that's got to get graded and prepped to put that in, as well as the sidewalk and curbs. All that work needs to be in place, so as these guys are getting those activities complete, then you've got to schedule the subs to come in, because it's, you're doing work essentially out of sequence of how it would normally be done.
Anything else?
No, no, but the, just to put everybody at ease, that the percentage additional cost that we're looking at here is what, I think it's what, 3%, I think?
It's about 4.8.
4.8.
It's significantly under the 10.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks.
Thank you, we appreciate your update on that. So you're all set, Mr. Zerlik?
We're all set. Again, just to, just the issues of salience, primarily to the public, is that we became, I became aware of this Friday-
Right.
And we met today, time is of the essence, it's within our purview of authority to grant this, because the amount of money is so large, I wanted to advise council what's going on. There's really no alternative, because winterization would cost more than the change order to accelerate the project.
Yes, a lot more.
Again, we'll try to get liquidated damages as well, as part of the negotiation process.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, well then, we'll recess and then have our study item in the other room, is that correct?
That's up, where we meet is up to you.
That's what we usually do.
Where we meet anyplace.
Okay, all right. So we're in adjournment, and we'll reconvene in the other room for the study session.
O- dash O- one is the restructuring committee quarterly report. We're going to do this every three months and provide an update of what's happened, where we are, and where we're going. And the reports compiled by Mr. Lamorato, Mr. Miller, Ms. Sears, Ms. Leirstein, Mr. Carlisle, and myself. We're also getting a lot of questions from other municipalities, even open counties, about what we're doing, so we're going to put this on the website along with links to our specifications and bid documents essentially as a public service. And you know what we've done so far? We've adopted a three-year budget which lets the city and the community know what we're going to do and what we're not going to do over the next three years. We privatized the building inspection department. Two years ago, we had 21 employees. If you look at our cost then compared to what our cost is going to be, it's about a million dollar savings per year is how we now operate. We also have a presentation on managing our two eighteen-hole golf courses that's going along well. In fact, both with SafeBilt for the building inspection and Billy Casper Golf Operations. Sometime in mid-August, we're going to have a presentation from them on how they're doing. You can ask them directly about how things are going and any nuances that you think are germane to that function. We've already reduced the planning department from five full-time employees to two along with the part-time consultant on an as needed basis. That saves about $250,000 per annum. Had an excellent presentation just two weeks ago from the engineering department which has achieved essentially the optimum balance between in-house and out-house staff given our $100 million rolling capital programming that we have, along with unfortunately cutting our staff essentially by 50 percent. And those are the departments that we've worked on thus far. I'm going to ask Mr. Carlisle to talk about the departments that he's currently working on, talk about some of the future things we have on the books, and then answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Well, the effort has been really twofold. One, as Mr. Zerling indicates, is concentrating on the on-demand services. And the second effort has been concentrating on those departments which have larger budgets in which there are potential room for cost savings through consolidation, regionalization, outsourcing, and the like. We've been spending quite a bit of time meeting with the DPW functions, meeting with the directors of the three departments that do some aspect of maintenance in the city along with Mr. Miller and Mr. Lamorato when he wasn't working on the budget, when he was available to meet with us. In the three departments, and I'm sure council is aware, but while you have a Department of Public Works which really performs the bulk of the maintenance activities as well as the other duties that they have, we also have maintenance duties that have been divided among building operations and also parks and recreation. So what we've been doing for the last several months is really looking at where there might be some efficiencies and perhaps some redundancies in terms of how that kind of service is really delivered. And really, the part of the reason, well, there's a lot of reasons for this, but obviously, one of the obvious reasons is to really be able to consolidate as many maintenance functions under one department such as the Department of Public Works so there can be some efficiencies in terms of how that function is managed, but also to be able to identify, once you consolidate these functions under one department, is to be able to better, be able to evaluate more efficiency in outsourcing some of those functions. And many of the functions are very similar. I mean, it's mowing, it's plowing, it's some of those things that you would consider to be maintenance or being performed by a couple of different departments. And so we are very close to being able to announce a plan where the majority of those maintenance functions will be consolidated under one department. The other reason behind this is that it's just as important, and that is to allow Parks and Recreation to really concentrate on its core functions. And it's been my experience in a down economy that departments like a Parks and Recreation Department actually become more important in the community because if people have less money to be able to travel or to be able to do other types of activities, the one thing that they will do is support activities that are for their children and for members of the family that are closer to home. And so by being able to allow Parks and Recreation to really concentrate on these core functions, it will perhaps be able to still emphasize maintaining those very important functions while the other functions that they have been assigned over the years, which are many of them the maintenance of public property, those, being able to transfer those will really give the added advantage of allowing Parks and Recreation to concentrate on the core function and to bring some efficiencies in with the maintenance under one department. And so that's essentially what we've been doing, and I think we're very close to being able to really work on that. One other aspect that we hope to present to you very soon, I think I mentioned this briefly, I may have mentioned it briefly when we met before, was in the area of building operations. We're making a lot of strides in building ops and fleet management with the area of energy conservation. And that is another area where there will be some significant cost savings shown over time. I mean, these things take time because it's not a sprint, it's a marathon when it comes to those kind of activities. But over time, we'll be able to show some pretty significant cost savings through various energy conservation measures. And that is already in place right now with the fleet management and the building ops department are really delving into these things in a very significant way. So we think it's over time it's going to show a lot of important results. If you think about the community center, I think it has an energy budget of something like half a million dollars a year, John, or something of that nature, close to that. Think of what that would mean if we were able to save 10 or 20 percent on that budget through energy conservation. That could be anywhere between $50,000 and $100,000, which is pretty significant. So those are some of the things that we will be concentrating on as time goes on in addition to the consolidation of some of these management functions, maintenance functions. Any questions about that?
No, I'm not surprised to hear that Fleet Maintenance is ahead of curve because of, of course, they just got their award of Best in the Nation on that area. So I imagine in those other areas too.
Yeah, I think one of the other areas of significance is, you know, they really have an excellent system in place for, you know, equipment, all kinds of motorized equipment. We're not just talking about things that we drive. And, you know, I was very impressed sitting in a meeting two weeks ago talking about the, sort of, the selling of equipment that really was either obsolete or not needed anymore or whatever, and the knowledge that the fleet management department had about, you know, the effectiveness of keeping this equipment or selling it, you know, renting instead of buying a certain kind of equipment, and really that kind of knowledge and concentrated knowledge to those kind of things is really, are really going to pay dividends for the city. And I think that's a further reason why to get maintenance and equipment management and all of that under one head will really be beneficial.
Sounds good. Dan?
If there's no questions on that component, staff and Mr. Carlisle have done an excellent job thus far in what we've analyzed. Now it's time to move on, and as such, I'll be meeting with the consulting arm of the International City Management Association. They've got about 9,000 clients, if you will, or members around the globe to take a look at cost efficiencies and effectivenesses, that's not, that's not a word, cost efficiency and being effective for the balance of our departments. Councilman Slater had an excellent idea of having a third-party review of every department. And we're leaving Mr. Carlisle's expertise with the departments that we've already analyzed. ICMA does have vast experience in analyzing police departments, fire departments, and other administrative departments. So they're coming down next week, and we're going to talk to them for probably five or six hours on the departments that are left. And then, of course, we'll come to city council with their proposal. And our hope is that we could finish the entire city by the end of this year, and we think we can do that. So those that are left that have a job will know that they do a good job, they'll keep their job.
That's good.
So you'll be getting a proposal hopefully sometime in August for your consideration.
Other questions or comments from council? May I, councilor?
I'm wondering if we could hear from our senior attorney.
Yes. We have been, I've been gathering information, I have a lot of the information, and it was similar to a presentation that the engineering department had given, and I had given that to the privatization committee for their input. I also have, since the engineering presentation, filed some freedom of information, I asked request to get some additional information, and I am obtaining that now. I don't have all of it, but I did get a couple of extensions of time that I had to deal with. So I am happy to present that to council upon receipt. I do not know if the ICMA has the capability of evaluating an in-house attorney's office. I don't know when the meeting is. I'm certainly willing to talk with them and see if they do have that ability. If they do, then maybe we can add our department to it. If they don't, I do have some comparables to give to you from other communities. I've tried to do as much of an apples-to-apples comparison as I can do given the information that's out there, and I'm happy to provide you all with the information I have.
I didn't speak with the ICMA about the law department, but I certainly can.
It'd be good to have a third party review.
And I think that's what we indicated that we'd like to see, so that in the end, we can say we've looked at every single department, and these are the things that we're doing to change things and make them more efficient, but also support, you know, the good people that we have.
In the end, essentially, there would be, from the management side of things, there would have been four consultants, if you will, that would have been Mr. Carlisle, Mr. Shrubka with an assistant in the building department, ICMA, and then Clint Moran, that's a consolidation efforts.
Yes, councilor?
And I'm just still wondering how the Zucker Report plays in, whether you're using, were you going to speak to that, Mr.?
Actually, I was just thinking as you were speaking.
My fault.
Yeah, the fact, when you talked about a third-party evaluation, I didn't mean to interrupt your thought by my body language, but the fact is, the thought came in my mind that, yes, we've been, we continue to go back to the Zucker Report and call from it, you know, a lot of the information which was all very useful. I mean, much of what was in there led to many of the recommendations that you see that have been implemented already, particularly, you know, the consolidation of zoning administration and code enforcement and planning. I think as we go on here in time, we'll see, you know, we'll see us through this, we'll, you know, the ability to provide more of a one-stop-shop type of approach, which is what the Zucker Report recommended, is it's certainly a challenging task, but certainly something I think is very doable. But yes, we continue to go back to the Zucker Report in relationship to all of these functions that are related to development-type activities in the city and use those as a guidepost. So when you were talking about a third-party evaluation, it brought to mind the fact that the Zucker Report was extremely useful in that regard.
It's an important trigger, and it changed not only the physical layout of some of the departments, but then the internal operations as well.
Exactly.
So I would just be curious, and not trying to make work for anyone, but on how those dots ultimately turned out. But I'm not asking for that as an additional, I'm just curious. Oh, perhaps there's.
Mayor Volvo, that question would eventually come up. We are continually working on this rap, and it's evolving, and I think it might be good to look at that, to see what we've accomplished and put it in the report form and what we have it and how we can get to that point. Because there's another point that Mr. Carlisle brought up, is Zucker Report really highlighting the importance of technological improvements and moving forward, which we're really starting to do that. The SafeBilt will do some of that also. Those technological improvements being used by code enforcement and planning now, actually the employees become excited, and it gives them a whole new means of communication, and they're entering the data in the cars with laptops, and it sort of invigorates them.
Heartaches.
Yes, heartaches.
Well, I mean, it's changed the way that we do business on the commission too, planning commission, they're paperless now, and, you know, it's.
That was a call for quite a while, so that's good. And I would also celebrate part of the Billy Casper model includes a lot of technology, recording, and being smart about how to do that.
Councilman Slater?
I just, I thought this was a great document. I didn't believe you'd need to meet after, frankly. Get on, and she's got everything in there, and I'm glad to hear that it's going to be on the web for everybody to see, because I guess kind of what you're looking for. Nice job. Thank you. That was very good.
Any other items?
Mayor, I apologize, I don't have the date, but I will send an email out to all council members, but SafeBilt is having an open house next week. They're inviting all the contractors and people who submit complaints, it's open to the public, and obviously you can stop in too. But I apologize for not remembering to send an email out first thing in the morning.
Include John and me too.
It must be, ESP is working here, because I was going to bring up the fact that I stopped at the desk there, the SafeBilt people, one time, and I guess it was Monday after Mike's retirement coffee, and I voted, and I stopped there. And they were very nice, everybody was very nice. The only thing is, I saw the report that some of the people retired and chose not to be hired by SafeBilt, some people were hired by SafeBilt, but I didn't see familiar faces that I knew. I think a lot of the people that I knew are ones that, you know, were retirement age and they had chosen to retire, but it was a good feeling, you know, when there were some people doing business, you know, a lot was there, and I just, you know, stopped in to say hello and welcome and all. So I'm glad to hear that they're doing that because I think that's part of the outreach kind of thing to show people that, you know, we're trying to continually do a good job in whatever format that we're under.
I know I'll forget some names, but Mark Riley, Mitch Groznick, Rick Kessler, who was laid off over a year and a half ago, they're back, they may have been in the field.
Yeah, they were. Well, no, unless they had come to the counter for something, you know, because there are people in the back.
I think most inspectors were out in the field.
Yes, right, yes, they were. That's where they should be. But some of the ladies, you know, that I, you know, but, no, I'm hoping that other people that come up to the desk are also having that same experience because we want those things to work out well. Hadn't been over to, I guess I should go into the golf course and see what's going on. Have you been to?
We were there this week.
No, I mean, have you been to play golf there?
I think that's one I missed, I think I have to catch that tomorrow.
Okay. Play all those up north.
But Mrs. McGinnis had a great, Ms. McGinnis had a great idea about having an update directly from Billy Casper and SafeBilt will certainly do that.
I'm sure they'd be happy to, you know, put with your progress.
Sure, that's good. Okay. Any other items you want to bring up? Okay, then we're in adjournment, and don't forget about taking one of these.
They're really good. They're very, very good.